Let me ask you to first stand with us and we'll open with a word of prayer. And then if you will remain standing, we'll join together in the pledge to the flag. I'm gonna call on one of our employees, Susan Harris, to open the meeting with prayer.
Chris, we have been called, Lord, we just come to you just so thankful, Lord. Lord, we just pray that each commissioner, each leader of this county, Lord, would take care of business as you seek for it. Lord, we just thank you for continuing to bless and our bless and our county, Lord, we just give you thanks for all. In your precious and holy name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Susan. Let's join together for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, we do appreciate you being here, appreciate your interest in the business of the county and the county commission. We have first the public comment section and in that section, we've scheduled Mayor Terry Holly to speak. Mayor, you're first up, so if you will come to the podium there and he has some interest, I suspect, on behalf of his city, Florella. All right, Mr. Holly.
Does everybody have one?
I think so.
I've got an extra one.
No, we're good. Everybody got one?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for being here today for that. I wanted to speak about the rescue squad, our situation that we do have in Florella. First of all, in your handout on number A there, this is why I'm here today. Is promote and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county. Is is the main reason that I'm here today. Also, under D, on the rescue squads, let me just give you a little back history. Right now, the city of Florella pays a thousand dollars a month to the rescue squad people. We also provide a place for them seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, housing in Florella. We've been doing that for over three, three and a half years to do that. So, we're we're funding that that money back to, for them to actually have services there to do that. We have an eighty-five bed nursing home in Florella. It's been the number one nursing home in the state of Alabama the last three years. So, the need is there and actually they will lose their license if we do not have ambulance service to do that. Right now, we have advanced, you know, care, you know, with it. Also, too, one of the things that we talk about is that in doing so, that we're the only one that actually pays in Covington County. As far as the city is concerned, and we we're providing the services down there to do that. And I'm saying places for them to be there. So, I'm here today to to ask for some help, you know, with that and to to really look at to see possibly if we can be part of the rescue squad money that's distributed out by the by the county. Look at D, it says, "An eligible rescue squad for the purpose of this amendment means the rescue squad that is certified by the Alabama Association of Rescue Squads of Emergency Medical Services." In E, "Rescue squads expanded for emergency medical and rescue services, including training, supplies, and equipment. Purchase liability insurance to ensure coverage of acts of mission with directly related to the functions of the fire department and rescue squad." In rescue squad. On the second page is on the on, is rescue squad should keep an accurate record to verify that funds were properly expended by September fifteenth of each year. Again, rescue squad. The next thing, and I think there's an asterisk behind there, is no rescue squad shall be funded within Covington County without prior approval of the Covington County Commission. F is the rescue squad, talks about it being transferred to the county commission if the money is not done right to do that. And I think that'd be redistributed back to the other rescue squads that we have in in the county to do that. G, rescue squads provided for the amendment shall not be considered employees that we have or rescue squads. So, basically, I'm here today to ask for some help and to to for if y'all would consider us getting that in Florella. Again, we've been doing that, so we've been paying about twenty-something thousand dollars a year for that service down there. And I'm paying for, and and we extend our things all the way to Yellow River. Well, we provide that money also, that's for Lockhart, that's all the way to Yellow River. We also go all the way to the Geneva line. So, we got a big coverage that we do to have that. And again, we're providing the services that's required for a full-time rescue squad to be, you know, in in an area that that we have. So, today, that's why I'm I'm here to to petition y'all to look at that. And I'm I'm ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, just to kind of capsulize, because the rest of you don't have what we have in front of us. What the mayor is asking us to consider is providing fu- allowing allowing Florella Rescue to participate in the, what we call the fire tax. Amendment five sixty-four back in nineteen ninety-three was passed by the citizens of this county. And it created a three-mill tax that is collected annually by the commission and then distributed out one hundred percent back out to our fire departments and our rescue squads. That includes volunteer fire departments, paid fire departments, rescue squads that are certified by the state. And Florella, in in order to to secure better coverage at what they feel is more adequate coverage, has been contracting with Haynes, I think, most most recently, Haynes Rescue out of Op. And they've located a unit there in Florella, full-time, is housed there. And so, they're able to respond more quickly than if you dispatch from the Andalusia location of Advanced DMS or the Op location of Haynes. And again, he's expressed concern about the nursing home beds, that they feel need the coverage of quick response. The funding is approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars a year right now. It's it's ad valorem, it's increasing little by little as as the county's properties increase in value. But it is approaching forty thousand per unit now. So, we have twenty-four, twenty-five volunteer fire departments and paid fire departments and three or four rescue squads that participate in that at this time. So, all of them together are getting almost forty thousand, so it's about a million-dollar pot of money annually. So, the mayor's asking that we consider putting them in there. He read one section that said, "No new rescue squads will be, shall be funded within Covington County without prior approval of the Covington County Commission." And that's that was the start of him coming to approach us today. So, with that in mind, do any of you have questions you want to ask him while he's here? And then we'll consider whether we want to take action on this today or consider it at a later meeting. But any questions to clarify what you heard or thought you heard or didn't hear?
I talked to Mayor Holly earlier about this and told him that, you know, I I certainly understood the need and the what we needed, what we felt like we had to do. We certainly can't do without that rescue squad in Florella and and the nursing home, and we understand that. I would also like a little time for our attorney to be able to look over this and, you know, make sure that we're got all our ducks in a row with before we do make any move on this. But I I certainly see the need.
Okay. Anybody have have questions for him?
Uh, this is the old hospital, right, the nursing home?
Uh, no, it's.
No, the new new nursing home. So, it's not a new nursing home?
I mean, it's right beside it. It's right beside it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, on the.
Okay, yeah, I I understand, I I appreciate that, but I'm I'm like Tony. I want to see how we can help y'all and do it in a way that's everybody's covered, and that's the only thing I'm I support it, you know?
Well, I appreciate that. And that's why I'm here today, just asking for help, okay?
Yeah, we just want to make sure we in line with what we're supposed to do and how we do our.
Terry, we've we've found that there's an agency, there is an agency that licenses rescue squads. And the ones that, the ones you you have depended on Haynes and Advanced, if they were to serve you, are both licensed. And then the question becomes, are they licensed once at their current location? Or or can they expand that because they place full-time service? Do they get a different license for that Florella location? And then if they do, then I think that automatically is is eligible for participation. Question is, how do they, how do they, what steps do they need to take? Or what steps do you need to take as the city that might kind of give them an umbrella? So, I think that's what these guys are asking for us to clarify. So, it's a little something we don't face often. In fact, I don't recall it in twenty-five years.
And I will say this, mate, that probably in a month or two comes around, we we are gonna make another announcement in Florella. And that this service will be greatly needed for that service.
Certainly.
Okay?
Uh, it, the other, what I heard you say, just to make sure I'm I'm clear, is that the service is located in Florella that
Yes.
it, they have an automatic dispatch area or coverage area that you said reaches to the Geneva County line, the Yellow River to the north. And that's just by agreement, I guess, with nine-one-one?
Right.
Okay.
And and we have advanced life support now. And and the next thing, that contract runs out December thirty-first. And and right now, we're looking at a a basic life support, you know, housing there, okay?
And you prefer advanced, if you can keep that?
Yes.
To the basic, you know, where you don't want to revert back?
We just need service.
Yeah, okay.
So, a- anything we can do to 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 keep the service there, that's what we're trying to do.
I feel like there's a way to make it make it happen, but we want to make sure we dot our i's, cross our t's, and make sure that it works for you guys as well, so. Anybody else have thoughts on this? Uh, we could act on this today, but if if there's a a wish to do it, Tony, you might want to just move that we table this for consideration at the next meeting.
Yeah, I will, that we table it until the next meeting.
All right. There's a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second? If nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed, same say. All right, we will, we will bring it back up on at the next meeting. So, if you want to join us again then, that may may be a good idea. All right, thank you, Terry. Next on the agenda is to recognize Michael Bishop, who wants to share about Red Ribbon Week. And then I think the commission wants to take some action relative to that. But Michael, if you will come forward and appreciate you being here today. If you have others with you, be sure to introduce them, maybe they all want to make a speech, that'd be fun.
Morning Chairman, Commissioner, Chair. Uh, my name is Officer Michael Bishop, I'm in the SRO, Red Level High School and Elementary School. And I'm here once again asking y'all to declare October twenty-third through thirty-first Red Ribbon Week in Covington County. Um, nationally, it's been held since nineteen eighty-eight. Um, it was founded in nineteen eighty-five in California in honor of DEA agent Enrique Camarena. He was working undercover taking down narco traffickers and manufacturers in Mexico when he was tragically murdered. And I think it's a testament to how, well, this program has worked for our youth and the fact that the program, you know, I wasn't alive when it was started, and these students definitely weren't alive when it was started. Um, that it's been going for over thirty years. Today, I have Tucker Livingston, he's SGA president and football co-captain. Kaylee Douglas, she's my Peer Helpers Club Vice President, and she's a state champion gymnast. Now, Caitlin Greig, she's a drum major for the special class marching band and a Peer Helpers Club member. These students and many others have used their platform as leaders in our school and community to continue the work started all those years ago. And as we know, with increased substance abuse comes increases in property crime and violent crime, which is a shared statement we see far too often. With your partnership and student leaders like these I have with me, we may be finally able to loosen the grip that these drugs have had on our community for far too long. And this is Tucker.
Why don't you guys come up, join him and, uh, because in just a minute, we're gonna take a picture, if that's all right. Uh, Kyle, you want to go and make the presentation, it's out of order a little bit, but I don't think it'd be inappropriate to do that now, if you'd like.
Says, "Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through the thirty-first, twenty nineteen. And whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifesp- lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the Covington County Commission further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Therefore, be it resolved that Covington County Commission does hereby proclaim October twenty-third through the thirty-first, twenty nineteen as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state."
Good. Is that okay? That's what y'all asked for. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Y'all mind if we get a photo with you?
All right.
Michael, thank you again for being here and bringing these kids with you. We appreciate what y'all do in your school and the fact that you're leaders in Red Level. And you set a great example for all of us, thank you.
It's good a reflection on their school, too, being involved like that, it means a lot for your school to be recognized, what y'all do.
All right, next on the agenda is Don Bowers of Wagon Wheel. Kyle, you want to mention his his being here and what is?
Uh, Mr. Bowers is here to talk about Wagon Wheel Road and the canal that comes up between Wagon Wheel and Hub Road. Uh, some of the community members came a few months back, but he's at first interest to speak to the commission again.
Okay.
As you, as y'all all know, that I'm here on behalf of the Wagon Wheel and Hub, uh, of the dirt that has been put in the mouth of the lake for the last, I think it's twice in the last twenty-five, thirty years, it has broken, put dirt into the mouth of the canal. Comes out, and it's restricted the flow of boat owners that live on that. Here, there's about fifteen families. And I came to inform y'all what was about two, two or three months ago and discuss this. And we're here today to find out exactly how y'all vote, each individual votes on whether, yes, y'all gonna help us or not.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Anybody have questions for Mr. Don while he's at the microphone? Okay. Thank you, Don. We'll 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 discuss it. Uh, you can you can stand there if you want to, but certainly, or you can have you have a seat. But commissioners, y'all are familiar with this, I know Lynn, we've had conversation about it in the past. We had asked soil and water conservation folks to look at it, and there's there's debate about how much is road cause, how much is from other natural celtation? Well, this ought to be a good time to observe it, and while the lake's down like it is, and we can see with the rains we had the last few days, we could look at how much new new dirt has gone in and.
Normally, when they pull it down,
Yeah.
it's sometimes out in the spring, the lake is back there.
Right, but but it seems to me like if if the road is causing all of the celtation, we ought to be able to identify a fresh dirt that's washed in the last week during the rain.
Where it has blown out of about forty-foot section.
So, it's really from years back, not 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 day-to-day so much as previous occurrence, as you're saying, okay?
And the history on it, you know, we, I think back in the in the soil conservation, I believe, actually helped with this with this. And I've got the file, and I should have brought this more, I just got got rushed, but, um.
EWP project.
Yeah, it was EWP project. And when when the lake was down, we did go there and we excavated that. And it was, I we, the the road blew out due to the to that big storm event. And we excavated the material out. And since then, you know, it's just the migration, it's just the, and it's gonna be a constant maintenance issue. And I went back and looked, and the the issue that we have with our lake is that it's a it's a static lake. Um, there's not much water flow than what just goes to the dam, which is the normal pool. But it is a, it is basically a pond or lake. And the problem we have is when a a live stream hits a static water, sediment is is constantly going through those streams constantly. And when it hits that static water, it slows down, it it the the water, it just doesn't have the power to keep pushing that sand, therefore, it just keeps building up. And I give two examples, um, just above the boat landing. I know if y'all seen, if you'll go to Google Earth and look at that, there's not a county road anywhere in that whole drainage area. But yet, that that's, and that's huge, and that is big as this building, that's that's plumed out there in that lake out there. At no cause to no one, other than the natural migration of sediment in a in a stream. And you can look at it, there's not a, there's not a, the first road, the the US twenty-nine is not blown out. But I my my question is, explain why that sand is there in that area and those others? I'm not just saying, it's just the migration of sand, and that's that's just the issue, it's just, I don't, if we if we dig it out, it's it's just gonna keep coming, where where the road blows out again.
They should put a a hole on the other side of the hole with that little.
A sand trap, he's talking about.
And and a catch field, and then periodically, every six months, a year or something, go check it.
Right.
But I know from me being over there twenty years and having a pontoon boat, that I had little trouble at all going out, till it blew out. What was it? I don't know, ten years?
Twenty-one, twenty-eleven, I think it was twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, somewhere there, yes.
Whenever it blew out, and at that time, the bottom of the pontoon, they threw it to the bottom, and I had problems. And then two years ago, I just found it.
Lynn, is, was that twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve occurrence, was that when when it was dredged or or dug out, excavated out? After that, so that was addressed as part of the EWP project?
The road hit twice, it, the road broke twice. One time, the pipe was, both pipes too small, but the pipe, uh, would not carry the water. And the last time, the pipe was put in, it was put down too low by allowing the sand to come in. If you elevate that pipe up about that high, the other side of the road will act as a sand trap, it'll catch that sand.
Yeah.
So, I'd say installation of the cover pipe, and I was in the Corps of Engineers, too. If you elevate the pipe high, you can use one side of the road as a sand trap to catch the sand to keep them going in there. A check down will slow down fast-moving water. I had seen a check down, uh, on end of the right ways, fast-moving water will erode. Slow the water down to a trot and it will not erode years much. The gully over Rose Hill is forty, fifty foot deep on, uh, County Route forty-three. Uh, the external cemetery is about to go into gully. And over a period of, uh, time, a long time, that road is made a gully, forty to fifty foot deep. You can put your house in, not through the top of it.
Is that on Wagon Wheel Road or Hub Road?
No, it's on, uh, it's on forty-three, it's Rose Hill, not, it's on Old Three-Nice Road, coming from Rose Hill.
Which is, which is not what we're, which is what, not what we're talking about today, is what my point is.
Okay.
Yeah, well, just so we can limit it to this concern that's been brought.
I was just telling you about the road.
You're talking about, yeah, you, sure, I get it.
We got sandy soils in the county, there's no doubt, we got a lot of erosion, we definitely have erosion.
If y'all did dredge it out at that time, I never knew nothing about it, and it, and I had problems from then on. And then two years ago, I just hit.
Yes, yes, sir.
I couldn't have heart attack pulling it, get down, pulling the boat over. So, it, if y'all dredged it out, it didn't help at one minute.
When y'all came out and dredged it out, uh, and we we did the road, y'all didn't go as far as what pushed the dirt. Gone that much so far, and I think it was like sixty feet from the road. And before then, I could get my boat in and out with no problem. And ever since then, I have not been able to use my boat, and that's been.
Probably eight or nine, ever how long it's been, yes, sir.
And when when y'all put the coppers in to redo the road, you put two thirty-inch pipes underneath the road. And when they suck them down in there, it filled up that much of boat cover, the sand.
From upstream?
Correct.
Yes.
On on Hub Road.
Yeah, but from upstream, not from the road, not from downstream, but from upstream.
They had a pipe in on Hub Road. Before they covered them up, it had built up with sand halfway through it. So, in other words, that much leeway coming through them pipes. So, it's like, if you move the coppers up, it will set a trap there. And then y'all can maintain that trap over there. Y'all already been out there, uh, several times to fix the roads where it has eroded up underneath it, where it's fixed to blow out again. So, there's gotta be a way to fix the problem. I'm not no engineer, I'm just a, I'm an ordinary person, you know? But there's gotta be something that we can do to eliminate the problem for for y'all and for us.
That that's why I never knew anything about being dredged out. It was just the sixty, like John said, sixty foot past the the road in the stream bay. It walked out there, it was, it blown out twice, it carried, carried right up there to that.
I got you.
But you, but but you did hear Lynn's comment about the other area that doesn't have a road in the vicinity that's sealing in equal to that. So, is it, what, how do we, I mean, where do we, where do we, how do we stop? I mean, we can't be responsible for celtation in the lake. And I I guess the question is, is this caused by the the road problems or drainage on the road? Or is it caused by just normal celtation in the lake? And I've heard a good bit of discussion from the professionals, from the engineers, as well as from USDA folks, that it's just, uh, to some great degree, it's it's caused by the normal celtation throughout the lake. It's, it looks the same as what everything else is, so.
Well, the drainage area that we're talking about, it's about three hundred and fifty or so acres. And it's about three tenths of an acre from the road that drains into the lake right there. So, about a thousandth of the drainage area is is by the road. But now, the ditches are flat, I mean, the road and this grass, I mean, because y'all's yards are, I mean, are are established there. I mean, I didn't send the washers you're talking about, I'll be glad to go and check that where it's undermining again, if that's an issue there. But, um, but it's just a, uh, and it's just, it's a problem. I mean, I I I I feel for, everybody lives up there, because it is a problem, um.
It's created a land value, a land value that's gone down and sort of up.
Yes. Yeah, those on the little canal there, I know, I I went back and pulled a a historic picture, uh, from nineteen fifty-two, I believe it was. And you can see the island, it was all woods. I don't know if the landowners dredged that back in years, because I was, I went born until sixty-nine.
Well, those are trees on the island was there in the water, or surplus grows in water.
Yes, sir.
Those trees was already there, the island formed from the road washing it too, that's where the island came from.
Ms. Bowers, did you have something?
I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, we have a boat house, and we have a pontoon boat, and we're paying taxes for it in the water. And for two years, well, longer than two years, we have not been able to put our boat in the in the water. Well, the boat, we had to take it out of there, move it somewhere else. But we can, we've got a boat house, but we we cannot, uh,
Not using it, yeah.
get our boat back in to put it in the boat house or even, and we cannot use it. So, therefore, I mean, we're paying high, high-priced taxes, but we don't have access to the lake, and it's not our problem.
Well, once, once it blew out, the last time, if you say it, two thousand eleven, that's when it really got dry. So, that dirt, that, I don't know, thirty, forty-foot section, those roads, went in that mouth, and that's when it actually got dry, didn't it?
I got you. I know, I think, uh, looking at the, I don't know if you ever used Google Maps, but you can see the timeline, they got the little timeline thing. You go back and look at the years of the historical photos. And I think in twenty fifteen, there, you can see a considerable amount of sediment dumped into the lake everywhere up there on that. Cause like I said, the, the plume that's there by the, the, um, public boat landing there on twenty-nine, that big one there, it almost like it doubled. And I forgot the years of the pictures of progression of the years of it, but I think like in a year or two-year period, it, a lot of sediment got dumped into the lake. And I know that was probably from the, uh, December twenty fifteen storm event that we had, you know, here in the county, it dumped about twenty-something inches. That didn't help none. But I, I agree, it's, it's an issue and it's, it's, it's gonna always be an issue.
Do we have any?
Commissioner, that road has been replaced since eighteen ninety-eight, when a railroad came to Andalusia in eighteen ninety-eight. That field where the road leads to was a place to stake out the mews, cause they was using slip pans to build up the road.
Right.
So that road has been there since eighteen ninety-eight.
Golly, do you have any, any thoughts on this?
Well, my question, what, what is the fix for this, uh, for the water to stop getting to the other side of twenty-nine? Put a sediment trap and, and stop the sand that's coming from up, up, from above the road in there to, to do it. What about cleaning up what's there?
Are there other?
I mean, that's just a.
I'm just saying, are there other canals on the lake?
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's one on, uh, yeah, there's one there, uh, Vala Shiloh, I know there's one there.
There's a Crystal Orchard Lake.
And Crystal Orchard's right, just, just, just neighboring there to Hub and, uh, and to Wagon Wheel there.
And I, I think I talked with a man yesterday that, uh, owns that, uh, Cypress Landing thing. And he is, uh, I don't think it's any settlement issue, but I know that they're doing some, some cleaning up around the edge there that, uh, uh, around their boat ramp stuff, just because of the natural fluid, you know?
But I know Crystal Orchard was, uh, it was dug out.
Right.
There's no natural string coming in.
Right.
Right, but there's a small one, but it's very, it's limited, yes, it's very limited, yes.
But I just, the man just called me and said they were looking for dumps out to do that, to clean it out, so. Uh, there's just so many places. Uh, on the other side, the lake over at Sand Bridge and those areas, they have sealed to then, you know, over the years. I mean, it's just, it's just what happened, cause of those hills coming in, yes.
Have, have, have they come to y'all and addressed a, a problem to y'all?
Who is that, sir?
The other people.
No, sir.
No, y'all, y'all, we got one other one and I've, uh, there was, and we had a ditch blow out.
So evidently it's not as bad over there as what it is at our residence. Well, that's, it's. The other people have not come to y'all and complained, and we're the only ones that.
That's right.
Okay. Those who blow out like we've had, put the dirt in there, no, but.
I, I was just up there and noticed it myself, I went up there, the, 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 in Sand Bridge where we got a turnout there. And just because of the, of the terrain from the hills coming off of, uh, uh, Dunk Bridge Road, the elevation dropped so much from there to them and there's, there's nowhere for the water to go but downhill and, and it's just gonna do it.
Lynn, what's, what would be involved in excavating that, that, no, let me, hang on just a second, let me, let me finish this first, hold on. Since I was, what, what would be involved in us excavating that, uh, area that they're talking about?
I don't know how, how bad it is, we had to probably madd in there and, and it'd take considerable time, probably a couple of weeks to get it out. To the extent where they're talking about.
Where are you gonna take it? I don't know, we're just talking about the canal.
Well, how would you stand up?
That's so we have to, we'd have to madd out there to, to, to do it.
And lay back.
Will you, will you, uh, look at that and come back with an estimate of cost and time for the next meeting?
Is it pretty dry, is it dry out there now, uh, Mr. Bowers, is it, is it kinda dry now, is it?
There was four or three, we had three and breaking it ancient round in the last.
But before, I mean, but it's, it's fairly thin, it's, it, it drains, it drains out pretty fast, yeah. So if it's, if it's decently dry, then it wouldn't be.
If you will look at that and estimate and then let's see what our options are and then we'll consider.
Yep.
And I, and the hesi, the, the commission's hesitant to do it at all, I've, and you've seen that because you've been back two or three times. The reason is because of how many property owners and problem areas there are throughout the lake. You see these other areas of siltation. I mean, so the next request is gonna be at the boat landing because they're not able to get in and out there. And again, we don't, uh, uh, we want to address any problems that we created. And, and if they came in and dredged that or excavated it after that last occurrence eight or nine years ago, yeah, maybe we address the county's problem, but you didn't, you don't think we took it far enough and I think that's valid, so. Yeah. Sixty-five, yeah.
That didn't get to the mouth where it, where it got.
So that, but I'm just explaining while we're hesitant, it's just that because the problem is a lot bigger than, what you're asking, we can do tomorrow, start tomorrow. But there are so many other areas that we have to consider too, so we don't want to set a precedent that has no end to it. And that's the, well, not that we don't wanna work with you guys, but that's the reason we're moving slowly on.
It's basically maybe a two-day job.
Can we hire you to do it?
If I had the work, if I had the work, but twenty years ago. But I know what process he is and we paid six five hundred dollars a man, how many years ago? Right after it blew out. To dig it out, but then he couldn't reach right there to the mouth.
And that's the same problem we're gonna have, and that's why we're.
The lake's down.
The lake's down.
Yeah, but, but if it was, so you did it, you did it while the lake was up.
Is it just a dam, I, I haven't been in there since right prior to the lake being down, um, is the, is it?
Down to the riverbed.
How, how big is that little area right there, is?
It's probably, uh, forty or fifty foot, might be thirty foot wide.
Okay, and how deep you think roughly it would take to get it, to get it, three feet or five feet?
I'd say about six, seven feet.
Six, seven feet deep and you say fifty feet in length and thirty foot in width?
Man, I wish we'd finished that back nine years ago.
But, uh, um. I got you, but I know, but it, it's the problem, I mean, you look at, if you, if y'all go across Dunk Bridge, you can look at there toward, uh, um, Cawal Creek. You see that huge plain that's out there, that's, that's got that whole area in right there.
So it is, it is a problem, some of the others.
We, I, we're, it is a problem, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
My, let, let me say this, my thoughts on this is if the county had anything to do with this, with the feeling, and obviously it did, these gentlemen that live there, uh, I'm a hundred percent behind us fixing it. But I'm also a hundred percent behind less solving, let's do it something to solve the problem, whether it's a non-problem five years from now, ten years from now down the road. I mean, I think it would be awful to live on that lake, have the boat house, have the boat sitting there. And a road caused a problem now that I can't use my boat or the boat house. Although I understand what you're saying and looking at the pictures from nineteen fifty-two forward, that silt was gonna get trapped, a lot of it because of that lake, of that island being there, and I understand that. But if we can do something to solve that issue from reoccurring, then, you know, I think that, I think these taxpayers deserve the fact of us getting it back where they can use it. My thought.
Alright.
I agree, al, also, is there anything that the state can do to keep the water from coming across twenty-nine? They can or they just won't? No, they, they, they can't stop. Okay. I mean, it's just tell y'all what to do.
Well, it's running into that little lagoon, whatever it is, above those fishbowl, that thing is, is still down over the years, you know, and it's, duckweed and everything else are going in it. And I remember when it was pretty deep, they having the same issue down on Point A. They actually had a dredge down there dredging out in front of Point A Dam because of the silt that's come down from, we call it upper pond from Gant Lake through the dam, and when it hits that stagnant water down there in front of the, the lower dam, as you call it, you know, it's settled out and they actually had a company in there dredging it out last week because they couldn't get to the mud gate. So in essence, this, erosion's a problem.
My point is, is I think that if we get back to where it's a silt problem, then I think it becomes their problem. If we, if we've got something that, that a Covey County Road caused the majority of the issue, then I think that is our problem.
And like I said, I mean, that twenty years and after that five thousand level caused it blew out, it's all. Oh, but I know from that point, it was just gonna get out.
Yeah, okay.
And it was right after the, that hub blew out and put that right in.
We, we're gonna look at it and, uh, hopefully come back at the next meeting and make a decision, yea or nay. And I know that's what y'all were here for today, but we, I feel like we need some information before we act on, a little more.
We can't wait too long 'cause they all, the water's gonna come back in.
Yeah, okay, yes, ma'am.
It's about thirty-seven hundred gallons a second during a, a twenty-five year event that, that blows through there. That's how much water comes across the road there, so, alright.
I did, I went, you know, the other day and looked while they had it down and Gant's not deep. That's a, that's a shallow lake and I told my wife, I said, people's out there skiing in six-foot of water. And that's dangerous, you know, and that's the thing that scares me. If you look now, if you go down there to the boat landing and look out across there, put your imaginary line out, going out, it's not, I mean, it's, there's not much water out there.
Rover speed there in the sixties, sometimes you had to ditch your speed to go to the stomach.
Okay, alright, if there's nothing else on this, we will have, uh, we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting as well and have a report from Lynn and our estimate of cost and so forth. If all minds are clear on that, we'll move on. One more item under the public comment, don't have it listed, but, uh, Buster Boyd has asked to address the commission again specifically on our public comment section. Buster, if you will, come forward and, uh, he knows the rules, he does like the rules and I suspect he'll touch on that. But it is basically three minutes, uh, to address, you know, whatever's on your mind, Buster.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, members, commission members, uh, my name's Buster, I just go by Buster. And I'm living in Andalusia for a while, I'm from Texas, as you know, I'm your political truth detector from Texas. And I, I do, listen, I, uh, let me start with Commissioner Adams calling me, I appreciate that. Uh, when anybody calls me and doesn't fuss at me, but you told me to come pick up the copy of these rules, which I did. And, uh, and I, I can tell you, although I'm not gonna fuss about it today, I've been, been talking to you for a long time about it. But, uh, I, I find that you're not following the rules. Let me leave it at that and I'll talk to you further about it, but I know you're worried that I'm gonna reveal something that you've told me through the years. I'm not do that, when you tell me something, if you complain about another commissioner, about somebody else, which you don't, I'm not gonna talk about that. Uh, I don't reveal confidences, but I do wanna say that, uh, oh, by the way, do y'all, will y'all please take, uh, pay attention to me on one little thing? Look, you got some students from Red Level here, your first page under, uh, B, the rules of procedure, look what it, such change in the rules, uh, pers, uh, procedures shall not take affect, that should be effect. I pointed that out to the office, y'all don't even do that, that's three years and nobody even reads the rules, I'm the only one that's read them. Hey, uh, I do wanna mention, you did give me permission to, I was worried about going in the executive session. Don't have time, you're not gonna allow me to do it, but I think it was a mistake. But I do wanna apologize to Ms. Cotton because I was complaining that there was no authority to go in the executive session. I was wrong about that, uh, because section nine of the open meeting under the exception for executive session doesn't provide for it. But my point is that it never should have been done. Commissioner Adams was the only one that voted against going in the executive session over that issue. Uh, and, uh, you know the issue I'm talking about. But his point was, he was ready to take a vote, y'all were wrong, but my, my point was that you shouldn't have been handling this executive session. You don't, this provides a, a problem, see? Uh, on Tuesday, you had, you went into executive session and finally Friday, Christopher Smith of the Andalusia News comes out and say, well, they just went into executive session. If you had been at that meeting that you and I were and paid attention, I found out what y'all did in the executive session. All four commissioners voted against letting Jimmy open that bar again. And, uh, I, I found that out easily enough. And I know you, you, but this is not something you told me in confidence, you were gonna vote against it if there was a tie against him. Now, you have mentioned that, uh, uh, that, okay, you told that to Jimmy too and the others.
Alright.
Yeah, alright, well.
Thank you, Buster, I appreciate your comments and appreciate your insight on the executive session.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir, close out.
I just don't understand Ms. Cotton's position in this. Now, I've been a lawyer for a long time, I haven't paid my bar dues over in Alabama, so, but I am licensed in Alabama, I've gotta catch up. And Ms. Cotton will lend me the money to pay the dues. But here's the thing, I did not understand why Ms. Cotton was grilling Jimmy Merrick so much.
Well, that was the way we chose to do it, but I appreciate your thoughtful insight about that. That, well, we did, we, we did what we felt was appropriate.
And I don't represent Jimmy Merrick and I don't put up with Eric and I don't really.
Thank you, that's all, Buster, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
We'll move on to, uh, other elected officials before we recess for a minute, anybody else? Michael, you wanna come, come back with anything or you good back there? That's good, alright, that's good. Uh, Sheriff, you have anything you wanna bring?
Just some pictures, stuff.
Okay, well, we'll come back, we'll come back after the, uh, we're gonna recess for a minute. Judge, Judge, any of you? Alright, yeah. If nobody opposes, why don't we recess till about five till, so about a six or seven minute break. And thank y'all so much for being here and bearing with us, we're recessed.